The eighteen year girls use that field because each field has a pitching rubber for each age division. Because they're set at different intervals.
How many fields?
We have four, uh, we have six. Four at main field and two.
All six are used? How often does this happen? This is a common occurrence? Rarely?
No, I believe with COVID last year, we had to do four sets of bases on that field. So, and we didn't hold a spring season because of COVID last year. We still have to go to bases.
What is, what is, what is the, the issues with the select? How many select do we have that actually? I mean, look, I have been out of athletics with kids, kids of thirty-five who have been one. And so, how select, while they're in the mix, are they paying for practice facilities? Are they paying for rentals? How are the rentals outside of the league? And is your agreement with the city, uh, does it go February through October? And does it, and does it overlap with select and UTB? I mean?
It goes January to December.
Okay.
So, no.
Well, we're all on the same boat. Where's our facility? Is it going to be the same? Is it really the same as the city?
So, so then you're still managing and you're still coordinating with other leagues? And from January to February, they may be playing.
No, we just.
And after October to December?
We've only, our game, we only play our.
Yes, yes, but, but your, your, your agreement with the city is from January to December?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are times when you're not playing, but you're still managing the leagues? And you have, not the leagues, the, the fields?
Yes.
Excuse me. And so are there any teams playing and using the field at that time in, in those months when you're not playing?
On, on a norm, yes. After COVID, no, because they didn't respect our.
When you say they, who, who's that?
Select teams that will use the facilities. Um, we, there was, with our, things that we had implemented for COVID, they did not take on until it was a battle. So, when we started this season up after COVID, we had, currently there's not select using the fields.
But our girls do use it on, like on Wednesday evenings when they rent it, our girls are using those, those time slots. So the fields are being used.
So what's the, so what's the average cost for that? Per?
Three fifty.
Three fifty?
Is that per each season or for?
Per year.
And per year?
Okay.
What were your COVID, uh, uh, protocol costs for, for your league and everybody else using the fields?
I mean, there were things.
I mean, just, just general.
Like, the, well, the big one was coach and young person on field. And.
Parents weren't allowed in the complex.
They needed to stand far. It was me and her to play. Now, they would be on the field, not only in the complex, but on the field. So then Amy directly has been called to many names because she's asked people to leave. You know, you're not authorized to be here, go. And they, they're not nice there.
When you said on the field, when they came to practice, so they would, would, you know?
But then they dug out that kind of thing. And we had to make our guidelines and they went to the city, uh, city attorney. And they had a good crew. And then we had to, you know, give them to the, uh, coaches and let them know what, what those guidelines were.
Did that create attention among the?
It did. It was, it was very hard. But our girls have taken, our girls are practicing on those Wednesdays and Sundays, you know? So the fields are still being used. They're just being used by the rentals.
Okay. Um, are those COVID streets still implemented in the place right now?
No.
And to be honest, our rec coaches and girls respected the guidelines as opposed to the travel select teams that are using fields.
Ed, how many, how many teams do we have in your league right now? How many, I'm, what's the number of girls participating?
I would have to look that. I don't even know. I think about two, three, seven leagues each.
How many?
We're, we're still, we're, 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 we're still slow because COVID. We got a lot of people not wearing masks because of COVID still.
Is that just right or that's?
That's right.
Anybody have an idea what select and girls travel teams are, uh?
We usually have about the same, you'd say five or six teams. I'm looking five.
I'd say about seven.
It's the usual scenes you see. There's a usual crowd that chooses to.
A lot of this usage of select teams are, does, does the light become an issue as far as light fields are not?
I would say so much, um, they only get Wednesday night or Sunday.
We only use them on Wednesday nights. We don't, we practice on fourth, uh, Sunday.
Lights when we want to. And that was only night that the preface boards allowed them. So we just kept it that way. And then after those are past of COVID and the guidelines, we decided we were going to focus on our girls because that's where we're. It was, we already had an issue because of COVID in our season. We decided we were going to focus on just our girls and not select.
Create attention.
Not so much. And it's creating more time for our girls on the field.
But is there some contempt with the select teams because, because of that?
Oh, probably.
Not that we can, but. That we're going to start playing this week. We'll play Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. You know, our girls only have Wednesday evenings to practice on those fields and Saturday and Sunday. Because of the, that those fields will be used for game time, you know? And if we're not renting them, then they have time to, to practice on those fields on Wednesdays.
What, let me ask you three questions. What is our acreage? Our footage, just about our eight, four, four, four practice facilities across the, the city that we assign? Just what?
Uh, we're at about one hundred and sixty acres, they're fit, across the entire city. So we have five hundred and twenty-five irrigated acres and entire, uh, parks that are dedicated to our.
That, that's all parks in the city that we would, any association would use to practice or gain?
Yeah.
I have a quick question. On the UTBB tennis softball, where do they help you practice?
At, at the city park there. Um, right there across from the football practice field.
Yeah.
That part.
And they same fields that we're?
There's the same field, yeah. There's, there's one field designated for UTBB's use.
What number is that?
It's field number three.
And what, their season, what, what does that span?
They're, they're, they have two seasons. They have a non-championship segment that is in the fall. That can range from, um, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five days. And they can play four or five games in the fall. And then they have a fifty-six game schedule, uh, for the spring. It's their championship segment that starts, um, mid-January.
Mid-fifty-six.
Fifty-six game schedule, yeah.
So is that the field that we're talking about that you have a conflict with UTBB just on that field? That won't sink the shareholders?
So do all the rec teams use that field for practices also?
I mean, they will venture off to other locations, but.
As I was saying, I wouldn't think it would be a nice place to have all the teams practicing there.
Yeah, and we have to keep a tight schedule on that. I mean, in the past, they have gone to other locations. We've had parents fight about it. And that's why in the last two or three years, we've opened up to where they can, we provide a practice time on the field that they should play on. Because that was a problem in finding the locations to play. There'd be five on the parents, teams, whatever.
Cause I was, I was, I'm curious, I was going to ask Tom, because I know we, this is, I'm on the, I'm on the soccer association also.
And just to be transparent, I feel on our board.
Yeah, so I know that we've, we've used this pretty successfully for, um, all the rec teams practice at one of the parks, one of the city parks. And just because we don't have the, the field space to allow every team to practice there. Plus, just with that much more interior, it's going to wear down the fields really rapidly. And we allow each team two practice times on the game fields. That way they can, you know, they want to run through, uh, where all the lines are, because all these teams are, are, they're younger. It allows them time to get used to that, to the field and whatnot. This is something that y'all could do for, I mean, we, you say that all the parents get bad stuff, whatever. Honestly, we've had any, um, any problems with that. There's, there's been a rule that's been, that's been set and it seems to be working.
I mean, to be honest, they get about two practices on the field a week. Each, each team does, between all the days. But to find a place to practice softball is kind of hard. I mean, you have to have a basis to be acquired. You have to have a pitching rubber to, you know, thirty-five feet out, forty feet out. You know, it just depends what division they are. And if you're not a backstop, you're chasing balls today. So it's kind of hard. The places are very selective where you could actually practice softball. So there'd be a lot of problems. Um, example, Ireland Park, Ireland Elementary was, uh, used to be a good go-to spot for softball. Football, we practiced there as well. There was a lot of issues there. So that's the kind of things that they've run into. When I say the parents, it would be parents between the two sports area. And the first, we were allowed to be here, we were not allowed to be here. I mean, it's, it's a school. So it was kind of obvious. And so that's why we, we made it possible for our girls to have a practice time on the field.
To your point, the associations have always played ahead at different facilities in the city. Uh, park facilities also, but we did have from schools too. Um, I don't know, years ago, maybe a couple of years ago, Steve basically outlined different locations. Each of us had permission to use, like for example, at Sherwood Park, if there's a backstop there, then the city allowed that for baseball and softball. If there was a soccer over there, they allowed that for soccer and so on and so on. If there was an open space in the region, they might have allowed it for, for football. Um, and that seemed to work pretty well. Uh, we still have issues with different sports. Um, anytime, you know, even softball, baseball, volleyball, it, I know this happens because we're all trying to occupy the same area. I mean, with, for example, on the parks and things and Mark's explanation of having your business. I mean, we've got almost two hundred teams and almost two thousand kids. So I'm always begging Steve for more space. We use every possible piece of space in the city that they're parked or a school. And if our people complain about not having a goal, rather than chase balls, we tell them suck it up, but fuck that, let's go. Because we don't have time with, and we don't have the space to give someone exactly what they want. That's uncomfortable. We're violent, you know?
Oh, need small fields.
We want, we want kids to play, but they don't have the perfect spot, perfect pitch. Nobody does. I mean, ask Mark how we deal with even the few select teams. I mean, they get a very small piece of real estate. Usually they get their one, one, uh, one group to get lights and there's nobody else. And that's the way we know how to do this. I mean.
Well, I'll say, just to add in on that, one of the things that baseball has.
That's a good point.
Backstop or no backstop, we're trying to find a place. But also a lot of the schools have closed their gates.
That's right.
And that has killed baseball. And.
Right.
Have they, have they said?
They said, yeah.
Oh, they called it COVID.
No, we, we, before we had that problem before, um.
Did they ever explain or just say?
I have not heard, I have not personally, I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of things. I have not been told directly why. Um, and I can tell you, um, at Reagan specifically, um, if you go to the principal and you request the space and you go to school there, he has allowed practice there, which is hard for me whenever I have coaches who just want a place to play that show up there. And, um, I've had, I've had parents with this fights over a practice spot. So, um, it's, practice sites are, um, they're hard to come by for all associations.
Yeah.
So, Dr. Woodley, talking about, um, you know, um, someone that coordinates these fields and practices, why do you all?
Yeah, my opinion though, I, I really do believe that in order for us to achieve the, the mutual goals that we have here, you're going to have to have professional organization and coordination. We believe we can do that. The university can do it. We, 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 we can do it through, uh, Falcon Athletics. Todd has experience in doing that and navigating all of these things. If we're able to expand, uh, the number of, uh, fields that are available by taking the fields that I've already been invested in by the, by the city, putting those into the rotation so that we make sure that we spread the activity out, you know, along, uh, then, then I think that we can solve that problem. Uh, you know, I, I do believe that whatever issues that we have, we can overcome. I think there's probably a, a different version, uh, you know, if we talk to softball about that. Uh, but, but the, but, but your perceptions are real. That is how that you feel. And I'm sure they've got a different perception and the truth is somewhere in the middle. But what I'm saying as president of the university is that, uh, my priority is to make sure that the, the sports participation, just as you said, I picture, the sport participation for the community is what we're here to do. Now, we're, we're not just totally selfless, you know? We, we also have an ulterior motive as well. We're trying to double the number of people who get a degree in this city, uh, in, in this community. And for our athletics teams, uh, in our, in the university to be promoted and to be able to work with people who are exposed to the university, we believe we'll be able to invest more of them to either choose Odessa College and our University of Texas Department of Education to get an education. We think that's part of our mission. So part of it is outreach that we're able to do. And secondly, squarely in our strategic vision is the economic development. Versifying the economy and bringing in additional industry is squarely in what a regional comprehensive university needs to do. For us to be able to add enough value that will allow us to really ramp up sports tourism while protecting the priority that we all agreed to, we believe we could be successful in doing that in everyone within. You know, we, we need more fields. We need to be able to improve the fields that we have. Uh, and the only way to do that without making it unaffordable for the average person, which we agree there are a lot more to do. We agree with you on that. You have to have a source of funds for doing that.
So, for you guys, what, what do you see as the downfall of them taking this over, if that happened? What, what are your pros and cons?
Speak freely. We, we need to hear it all.
I mean, I don't.
I just wonder why the university wants to take control of, of youth sports and city program. Um, that, that worries me a little bit because, um, we're volunteers. We do it just for the kids. You know, um, the, the university had ulterior motive of promoting, uh, business and that kind of thing. That's great. But I'm just worried that the kids are going to get lost in the mix of it.
Yeah, well, I'm with you.
You know, and so, um, that, that's my concern. I, you know, I don't personally like the idea of the university taking control of the league. I think that's a mistake.
And so if I could clarify, we're not talking about taking control of the league.
No.
Uh, so, so let me just make sure that you understand. We really are a central support scheduling organization. We do not intend to, uh, uh, you know, manage the league operations. That's not what we're talking about here. The, 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 the associations will, uh, it should be able to proceed as you currently are proceeding. And you're, we're not worried about managing your umpires. We're not worried about all that thing. What you have to have for all of this to work is a central organized, uh, professional management so that we can juggle the scheduling and help, uh, Discover Odessa bring in the revenue that will allow it to be affordable for everyone for us to be managing. We're not taking over your operations. That's not what we're talking about.
So really the direct question to you guys is, do you have a problem with instead of going right out here to practice Tuesday and Thursday? Do you have a problem with going to Kenny Bar on Tuesday or over to Sherwood Park on Thursday to get your practice time in? Or A, you've got no competition and B, you can put your bases down, have your practice, pick your bases up and leave? So that, that's just a crude example, but there's, there's got to be some point abilities of give and taking. Looks like to me that's a solution. That way you know that when you show up at Kenny Bar down at nine twenty on Tuesday afternoon, you're it. It's your field at six thirty. Your game at eight o'clock. That's your field.
Scheduled.
And it's, it's been scheduled and nobody else is going to be there. You're not going to give any fish fights anyway.
I mean, we run a tight ship as it is now. We, we schedule our practices and we schedule our games all on the same field. Games have to work around UTB, UTBB schedule. We managed to make it work.
And hospital.
But, yeah, and there's.
Because sometimes we have to work on the hospital schedule as well.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that, that's a personal, like I said, I think all of our association's schedule, game schedules, not practice schedule, are driven by our officials, our most preferred games, our, it's always that way. The schedule that we build every year for soccer, every single Saturday when we play our games, Sundays, is all driven by the available referees that we have.
What's your vision? Is there a shortage?
Yes.
Yeah, there's.
Super negative of the year.
Well, I mean, I wanted to go into officiating.
I mean, I started rep in nineteen ninety-five and I was probably doing maybe a hundred or so games a season. Now a year I probably do more like five or six times because we rep all day. You know, we're repping every single, every single day that it is. You know, and that's the mission to run, run the league, the way myself and the board do. And I'm not going to, I'm one of a few adults out there. We, we recruit, 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 recruit. And just like everybody else, we pay our referees, our officials as well as the possibly team without driving the call so high. Kids can't play. But still, that's what drives our, that's what drives our schedule, our game schedule. I'm not going to practice.
I guess that's an issue you request support for all the association, football, and everybody, and officiating.
Well, and I, and I think also, again, thank you for that question because it's important that that's clarified. Really, it, it, it's a centralized coordinating support system. You have to have a central organization to, to manage all the things that we're trying to manage. We're not trying to, to run the organization. Uh, we, we, we think we can also improve your revenue as well. You know, we were looking at some of the, you know, the, the financials where, you know, uh, in one year there was a seven thousand dollar loss, for example, in, in concessions. One of the things that the university brings to the table is the ability to bring in our professional food service and really ramp up and professionalize the concessions so that you don't have to do it and that we share the revenue with the associations on the profit that comes from those. We think we can do it at a profit and we want to share that profit. And I think the other thing I would say is, you know, the, uh, you know, the ability to make sure that we, um, uh, allow the associations, you know, to take their budgets and manage it in the way that you already are managing. I don't have, I don't, I don't need to know any, I don't need to know any of that. What I need to be able to do is make sure that the university and the city can do this in a way that keeps it affordable unless the association continues, but that we also have a source of revenue that will allow the university and the city, uh, uh, to be able to do even more on those fields and to be able to do that. The only way to do that is to find a way to grow, uh, the, the operation, expand it out over the other fields that you have. And then I think we can find a way to manage it where the, the association is not only revenue neutral in this deal going forward. Because we have no intention of, uh, you know, having a situation where you have to jack up the price, you know, to the, to the, to the local youth and adults. That is not our intention. That is the reason why being able to manage the, uh, you know, the external, uh, sports tourism is a win-win. If it can be done professionally and properly, we believe the university can do that. The other thing I would say is, you know, we want to be able to have a, a central website that promotes it. We want to be able to make sure that we get more people from all of your sports included in there. We want to be able to increase the participation in the other areas of the city where there's not. The university can use, uh, its, uh, you know, its resources on marketing and social media and technology and concessions to work with Discover Odessa to promote that in a way that that revenue then can flow back, not only to, for the city to continue more investment, but for the associations to have even more revenue than you already have. You know, that, that is what we're talking about.
You just want to go.
I don't, I can't speak to other associations, but umpires, pre-concession money are tied. Or that's where they usually pay their umpire charge, is the concession money. How does that change if they take a pre-concession?
Yeah, so, so that, that is part of what Todd has been, you know, trying to get together and sit down with each association and look at NBB. We need to understand the part of your financials that you need to make it work. You know, I don't remember which softball, I think it probably was Odessa Sports Softball Limited. They're the ones that showed in their last year they lost that in the house. And you may have made them. But we, we, we cannot want to, to have a situation where you have less money to, to run your organization than you have now. In fact, we believe the value that the university adds will add revenue to your bottom line. We're committed to doing that. Now, we've got to figure out how all this is going to work. And like someone else said, everybody's going to have to take, give a little bit. Everybody's going to have to understand that, you know, there's going to have to be some changes going forward. But, uh, as the president of this university, you know, my reputation is online here. I will look all of you in the eye and make sure that you understand that we do prioritize what you do. We want to make sure that whatever we do works for you and even better than it is right now. Uh, and, and I think we can accomplish that. And we would love the opportunity in the next, uh, you know, uh, month to sit down with you one-on-one, Todd and his team will sit down with you to understand exactly what you need to be successful. And to make sure that when we do bring the proposal together for this one-year trial period, which is what we were going to have to do because the lease is about up, then we can get to the end of the year. And if everyone doesn't feel like they're getting what they need, then we can have a different, you know, conversation. And that's what we would ask. The ability to sit down in good faith, go over, uh, what, what you need to be successful. But we're committed to that too.
You know, your, your comments, your comments imply that we're not successful.
No, you, I'm sorry.
I disagree with that.
Well, I certainly not, no. If I said that, that's not what I meant. You need to continue to be successful. I didn't mean that you weren't successful.
By the way, it's not a lie.
No, no, please, that, that is, I believe you are successful. Uh, and we want to add value to that.
I mean, you mentioned concessions. She, she mentioned, you know, paying outside concessions. We don't even run our concession stand. We want a complete, total headache. I can't.
Well, that's the value that we can bring and then add a little revenue.
We actually have somebody else do it. We don't even, we don't get a dime out of it. And to be quite honest with you, I don't even want a dime out of it because it's a total pain in the rear. I don't want to do what it's. I got no trouble dealing with not having to worry about who gets, who's coming water off.
And, and talking.
No, I, I think, I think going, going to that point, Tom, is, is where we can come and uniformly apply concessions and get it, get it, alleviate that headache for you and, and professionalize it, elevate it. And if you have volunteers that want to work as, from parents that are a part of your league that want to do it as part of a fundraiser or work the concession stand and, and generate some maybe additional revenue, that's how a lot of universities handle, uh, in, in the power five, okay? They can't manage and hire all the people that work concession stands at a football game. So they have outside groups, church groups, Lions clubs, civic groups that come in and they take a cut of whatever the sales are for that UTB stand. That's the model that we would look to put in place. And, and so we're pushing revenue back to your organization if you want to be a part of that. If you don't, that's fine. We can talk about those things too. And, and all those things begin, and, and, yeah. Please don't take the implication that, that you're mismanaging anything.
No.
It's, um, it's simply, we're trying to add value to what you're already doing.
Yeah, I mean, I always look at the market and, you know, echo what I say. Our concession stand is kind of a, it's a chain.
Yeah.
Our focus.
They always mostly are.
Our, our focus is having kids.
Yeah.
The concession stand is ancillary to any of that.
It's a customer service. And so if you want to take it over, yeah, it's funny.
We have people running now that do a great job and, and like I said, we don't get a dime out of that. And I, I started, you started a headache because I got a picture of a big ice machine most of the time.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's been a gossip given that, given that part of the, our association away to somebody else to manage to take care of that. And, uh, and you asked how, um, how do we pay the referees? Um, yeah, we don't have it based on concessions. We're one of them having over it. It's just built into the fees.
Right.
Um, and that's, that way it's, uh, it's objective. It's, it's, we know that it's going to be there. We don't want it to be based on, um, something that's on the total as far as how it consists.
Right.
I mean, what if we had a, a bad weekend or something? I mean, I don't know if that's ever happened.
Or like, oh, we didn't even have a concession open last year.
Right, yeah. We just built against the fees.
So your fees are adjusted to, you know, the rate of your officials?
Yeah.
And that's, and that's for the rec part. For the, uh, club part, the, uh, the teams themselves, the, 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 that kind of the teams, uh, paying.
Yeah.
We just, that's it up between the two teams and paying.
They want to pay after.
How does football and baseball, how do you, your concessions?
Uh, so instead for football, that kind of sets a lot different than everybody else. Uh, we play multiple sites. We don't have one single one up until now. And thank you, Tom, for helping us out and get us going.
Thanks. There's you guys.
Yeah, for anybody helping us. We're, we're kind of new to the block in football. Um, we, we're just getting working on it and stuff. But our, uh, we, we put the concessions back on the teams, like the home team for whatever location that is. And we allow them to run the concessions and, and use it as their fundraiser or pay anything that they want to pay extra. All of our referees are, uh, All of our referees are, uh, calculated into our base.